Good evening. Will this meeting of the School Board of Independent School District 279 please come to order? It is the 19th of April 2016 and the time is 6:05 PM. Seated in front of you this evening, from my left to your right, is Director Jessica Craig, Director Lynda Edom, Director Bob Gerhart, Director Dean Henke, Director Jim Burgett, Director Jackie Gertz, and Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Kate McGuire. Would everybody please stand for the pledge?
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Board members in front of you is the agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, I would move to accept the agenda as printed. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gertz. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries to accept the agenda as printed. Our next agenda item is audience opportunity to address the school board. If anybody would like to address the school board, we have salmon-colored cards on the tables back here. I currently do not have any, so... And I don't see anybody moving. None?
The little one.
Having none, we will move to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. McGuire.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, a regular part of the superintendent's report is to share points of pride. Points of pride celebrate students, staff, and community members who are contributing to the accomplishment of our mission, which is to inspire and prepare all students with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning, and I've asked cabinet members to share those points of pride tonight.
In the category of achieving dreams, for the second consecutive year, Maple Grove Senior High has been recognized by the U.S. News and World Report as one of the nation's best high schools, earning a Silver Medal in 2016 rankings. This award program recognizes high schools based on their performance on state assessments, graduation rates, and how well they prepare students for college. Evan Skaya, a senior at Maple Grove Senior High, has been named a candidate in the 2016 U.S. Presidential Scholarship Program. Inclusion in the program is one of the highest honors bestowed upon a graduating high school senior. Scholars are selected on the basis of superior academic and artistic achievements, leadership qualities, strong character, and involvement in the community and school activities. Arianna Pope, a senior at Osseo Senior High, is among 15 students selected as a winner in the Fourth Annual Minnesota Aspirations for Women in Computing Awards. The award program honors young women in grades nine through 12 for their computing-related achievements and interests. Malcolm Lawson, a senior at Park Center Senior High, received a D scholarship from the University of St. Thomas. Each year, the D scholarship program provides four-year, full-tuition scholarships for up to 15 well-qualified, underrepresented, first-generation students and graduates from urban high schools.
Maple Grove seniors Casey Peak and Mackenzie Lund won Best Position Paper at the Model UN State Conference. Kelsey Frizzell and Connor Friedman won Best Delegation at the conference by spearheading the winning resolution. Representing the Republic of Congo, all four addressed the issue of child soldiers. The D ideas keep on coming. Destination Imagination Team took first place at the state tournament and will advance to the global finals in Knoxville, Tennessee in May. Destination Imagination is a leader in project-based learning opportunities that blend STEM with the arts and social entrepreneurship. Students on the team attend Osseo Middle, Osseo Senior, and Maple Grove Senior. Mackenzie Barta from Maple Grove Senior High, Ari Jones from Osseo Senior High, and Maddie Heitzig from Park Center Senior High have been named Athena Award winners based on their athletic achievements. Mackenzie is a basketball standout who was a Miss Basketball finalist and who will attend Harvard University and play basketball there. Ari is a three-sport athlete, excelling at tennis, basketball, and lacrosse. Maddie is a talented soccer and track and field athlete. They will all be honored at a ceremony in May, along with approximately 50 female athletes from schools in and around the Twin Cities.
We have two points of pride in contributing to community. Maple Grove Senior High student Ally Rudin teamed up with classmate Connor Scheidler to host a benefit showcase to raise funds to help send a child with neuromuscular disease to camp. Several students performed in the show. During spring break, 30 Maple Grove Senior High students and their chaperones traveled to Cape Town, South Africa, to serve the township community of Nunzamo as part of the school's Global Outreach and Leadership Development Program, also called GOLD. In South Africa, the GOLD students worked at a local primary school and facilitated a music, dance, and art program for sixth and seventh-grade students. GOLD students also created a large garden to help provide vegetables and some income for a local orphanage. Our next category is lifelong learning. WCCO news anchor Kim Johnson recently shared in a Maple Grove Magazine interview that she credits her experience serving as the editor-in-chief of the Maple Grove Senior High newspaper as a crowning achievement that lit her fire for a career in news. Johnson is a 2001 graduate of Maple Grove Senior High. Hyren Patel, a junior at Park Center, was selected for a scholarship offered by the Minnesota Association of International Baccalaureate World Schools to attend the Ivy World Student Conference in Switzerland this summer. At the conference, students will discuss global responsibility, citizenship, sustainability, and social responsibilities. Thanks to Google Expeditions, hundreds of second through fifth graders in the district enjoyed a collection of virtual reality field trips, taking them to museums, oceans, and even outer space. The 360-degree photo and video panoramas are enhanced with details, points of interest, and questions, so they can be integrated into the class curriculum. Eight school sites participated in this program.
When the city of Brooklyn Park issued a fun challenge for the community to adopt a fire hydrant, two of our schools answered the call. Brooklyn Middle School's Project Community Club and Zane Wood Community School's After-School Art Club both participated by keeping their chosen fire hydrant clear of snow and ice, while also temporarily dressing them up and naming them. Both groups earned a visit from fire department representatives, who taught a mini-fire safety lesson and brought mementos of appreciation for the students. The middle school model is allowing for students to experience enrichment and challenge in new ways. For example, at Maple Grove Middle School, all eighth-grade students are participating in enrichment and stretch projects that allow them to apply their learning in math, social studies, science, and English language arts at a higher level through world, real-world experiences. One eighth-grade team, including the students pictured here, chose the 20-time approach. The concept is based on companies such as 3M and Google, which encourage their employees to spend 20% of their work week on something they are passionate about that is outside their job description. During 20-time, which takes place during the advisory period, students are challenged to set a goal or make a product connected to learning about anything of their choosing. This year, students developed college and career readiness skills, such as how to set goals, research, organize, create, problem solve, and more. Advisors have reported that the students' work has been impressive, with projects varying from creating gifts for patients at a children's hospital to inventing a new product and starting a business. Students and staff from several of our elementary schools, including Basswood, Birch Grove, Crestview, Fair Oaks, and Elm Creek, attended the 2016 Minnesota Fuel Up to Play 60 Rewards Summit at Winter Park in Eden Prairie. The summit is a celebration of achievement with the Fuel Up to Play 60 program. The event included a day of physical activities, a nutritious lunch, educational nutritional games, a visit from a dairy farmer, and other special guests.
Nearly three dozen staff members at Brooklyn Middle School recently took advantage of an opportunity where students taught the teachers. Five eighth graders hosted a Celebration of Culture staff meeting with the objective of raising awareness of cultural diversity. Students shared details about their background, family, and culture, with experiences ranging from being adopted, persecution from foreign governments, immigrating to the U.S., and learning English as a third language. Staff also participated in an interactive discussion, a discovery activity, and enjoyed different cultural foods. Kid Stop recently held its first annual STEM Fair at Maple Grove Middle School. Middle school students in our after-school program, The Spot, hosted the event for 48 students in grades K through 5. Kid Stop students from Basswood, Fernbrook, Oakview, Weaver Lake, and Zane Wood Elementary Schools participated either as exhibitors or attendees who voted for their favorite exhibit. The District 279 Children's Chorus was selected to perform at the Minnesota Music Educators Association Midwinter Clinic. The 89 student singers from all 17 of the district's elementary schools were proud ambassadors of Osseo Area Schools as they shared their talents. And in the category of mission-driven employees, Kristin Pangra Anderson, a fifth-grade teacher at Edinburgh Elementary, will be honored as a semifinalist at the Minnesota Teacher of the Year banquet in May. She's been a teacher for 10 years and believes every child can be successful. She strives to inspire a love of learning in her students and build community by focusing on students' strengths and allowing their voices to be heard.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, in the rest of my report, I'll begin by talking a little bit about our core planning team, Strategic Planning Group, that met this week. The Core Planning Team is a group of community members, students, and staff members who come together annually to review progress on our goals and to influence our priorities for the next school year. This is the team, at least some of them, who devised our mission statement, core values, and strategies 10 years ago. A few members of the team have been participants since 2006, but typically, there are some new members each year. We have two board members who also serve on the Core Planning Team, Lynda Edom and Jessica Craig. The Core Planning Team is an important part of our strategic planning process. Our mission declares a bold future for our students, and we take it seriously when we declare that we intend to help our students achieve their dreams, contribute to community, and engage in a lifetime of learning by equipping them with confidence, courage, and competence. In addition to those goals, the state of Minnesota has established specific goals for every school district. And in order to achieve that preferred future, we need a well-designed plan of action, and that's where strategic planning comes into play. The strategic planning process provides discipline in our planning and accountability process. It allows us to set priorities among our intense needs and wishes, and through an annual updating process, enables the board to recommit to what it believes we should be doing each year. Now that the Core Planning Team has completed its work, cabinet members and I will review the recommendations of other community advisory groups, like DPAC, who will be making a presentation this evening, and FISCAL, and make a recommendation to the board in May to establish our priority goals for next year. Our Business Services Team continues to earn recognition for high-quality financial operations. For the 27th consecutive year, Osseo Area Schools has received a Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Association of School Business Officials International. The certificate is awarded to school districts that demonstrate quality and clarity in the preparation and issuance of their comprehensive annual financial reports. It's the highest recognition that's offered by that organization. Lastly, for the eighth consecutive year, the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation has recognized Osseo Area Schools as one of the nation's best communities for music education. The honor acknowledges outstanding efforts by staff, parents, students, and community members to ensure access to music education for all students. This year, 476 school districts in the nation earned this designation. Osseo is one of only six districts in the state of Minnesota to earn the 2016 designation, and the only district in Minnesota to earn the designation every year for the past eight years. And I'll end with a bit of trivia. We saw a picture of the District 279 Children's Chorus, and next year is the 50th anniversary of the District 279 Children's Chorus. So we'll have... They'll be celebrating and going on a little bit longer tour. Thank you.
Thank you for those reports. Our next agenda item is school board reports, and we have one for the April 5th work session. Director Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The school board held a work session on Tuesday, April 5th. The work session outcome was that board members will be informed about the progress on priority result goals, recruit and retain, digital learning, and community trust. The work session began with a review of our World's Best Workforce Strategic Plan. Each Minnesota school district is required by law to have a World's Best Workforce Strategic Plan to accomplish five goals. One, prepare students for kindergarten. Two, ensure grade-level literacy by grade three. Three, ensure college and career readiness. Four, ensure that all students graduate from high school. And five, close gaps in achievement and graduation rates for students of color, English learners, and students from low-income families. Board members then received an update and discussed progress on three priority results. The first priority result team reported on the effective recruitment and retention practices to build toward a workforce that reflects the demographics of enrolled students. The team provided background on the work completed in previous years and data outlining progress the district has made in hiring administrative and nonlicensed staff of color over the past three years. Second, the school board learned about the progress the school district has made in expanding student access to mobile devices, increasing the use of online curriculum in grades 6 through 12, and enhancing personalized and flexible learning. Data showed increased usage of Schoology, the district's learning management platform in 2015. The digital content used in classrooms was reviewed, also along with results from a teacher's survey and a student's survey on digital learning. Professional development and tactics for personalized learning were also described. Lastly, school board members heard a report on the progress to develop trust among community members. This priority result team included community members. Included community members. The team did research in previous years, and for the last two years, the team hosted a school showcase to build trust among community members at an elementary school. The team described next steps, including recommending a new priority result for the 2016-17 school year on customer service. All school board work sessions are open to the public and are also audiotaped. Members of the public can access audio recordings of the work sessions on our district website.
Thank you. Board members, are there any other school board reports? Hearing none, I will move to the next agenda item, which is a presentation. It is the District Planning Advisory Council, DPAC, the final report and recommendations. So Jeremy, welcome, and I know you have guests with you.
Good evening, and thank you, school board members, Superintendent McGuire, cabinet members, and members of the viewing audience. My name is Jeremy Willey, and I am the Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Educational Standards for the Osseo Area Schools. Tonight, I am delighted to be here with our DPAC Committee to share with you our work and our recommendations for the 2016-2017 school year. DPAC is an acronym for the District Planning Advisory Council, and this committee, many of whom you can see standing behind me this evening, is made up of very dedicated members that meet on a regular basis and then conclude the school year with recommendations to the school board and superintendent for consideration. I have had the privilege of being able to work with this group for the first time this year in my capacity as the new director of CIES. Throughout this time, I've had the opportunity to work closely with Marty Cohen, Chair of the District Planning Advisory Council, and it is my sincere pleasure to introduce you to him at this time, who will begin our presentation this evening.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, board members, administrators, teachers, parents, students, some of whom are here tonight, that are members of the DPAC Committee. Tonight, you will hear from three subgroups. You will hear nine recommendations that are coming from our committee. There were several weeks, luckily this year, we had no weather reasons not to show up for DPAC, and so it was a good year. We had eight elementary buildings that were represented in DPAC, three or four middle schools that were represented, and all four high schools, along with three members from the general community, and three students, one each, from each of the high schools. So it was a good year. Tonight, you will also hear from one of the students that was... That is a member of the committee. So as I pointed out, membership is all of us. There are some administrators that are on the committee, there is a board member on the committee, we have plenty of parents, some teachers, and students. We had diverse opinions, diverse comments. The purpose of the District Planning Advisory Committee is to assure community-school cooperation in setting improvement goals, evaluating progress towards meeting annual objectives, and in reporting the findings and recommendations to the entire school community. Membership, as I pointed out, is of all the people that we represent. It is required by state law to have such a committee. It is also guided by school board policies. We periodically will review the mission of the district, measure achievement objectives, require and elect district-wide instructional programs. We review extracurricular activities. We review required components of district-wide programs. We evaluate procedures for evaluating progress towards those instructional goals, and the procedures for reporting progress towards those goals. To annually participate in the evaluation of program progress towards achievement progress, achievement objectives representing district instructional goals. Development of annual objectives for improving student achievements, development of annual program, and staff development plans for meeting the above objectives. Evaluating of progress towards annual objectives, and reporting of findings and recommendations. So as I pointed out, you will hear from three groups, four people, nine recommendations, and we will begin tonight with... Hopefully, there he is. Mark, who will discuss the findings and recommendations from the Achievement and Evaluation Committee.
Thank you, Marty. Thank you, school board. Again, my name is Mark Strofis. I have a... My youngest daughter is a senior at Park Center Senior High, and my oldest daughter is a graduate from Park Center Senior High. I am a member of the Achievement and Evaluation Subcommittee. Our committee starts out the year usually looking at the test scores and the data over the years, discussing the particular measures, such as the gap and growth in achievement metrics. We... When we got around to talking about what our recommendations were going to be, one of the things that kept coming up was the fact that both parents and students have expressed some concern about the rigid and inflexible curriculum for the high school students. The district mission talks about allowing our students to achieve their dream, but the district graduation requirements and other factors have resulted in little opportunity for students to take electives that could help them to formulate their dreams, especially if college isn't part of their post-secondary plans. So to that end... Do we... Sorry, how do I advance? Thank you. So our recommendation was... Is that the district expand the high school course options while still satisfying state district requirements, and to ensure that all of the high schools offer a broad variety of coursework through their curriculum. We also recommended that the students... The curriculum allow the development...
God bless you.
...allow students to earn credits more efficiently through creating elective space in their schedules to allow them to better explore their dreams. Thank you.
Our next presenters will be Gloria and Brian for the Student Services Committee.
Hi, my name is Brian LaRose. I represent Woodland Elementary School. I have a sixth grader at Osseo Middle and a third grader at Woodland. I've been on the Student Services Subcommittee for a number of years now with DPAC. We are known as the Touchy Feely Committee, so we take care of issues dealing beyond the numbers and the programs. We deal with things that help the students and help the community. With that, I'm going to introduce my partner.
Hi, I'm Gloria Nyakua, and I'm a student at Maple Grove Senior High. I'm currently a junior, and I'm also part of Student Services. So for recommendation one, we recommend that the district continue the commitment to equitable student achievement by training all staff on racial equity and culture responsiveness. And we know that you guys are already working on it, so we thank you for that, and we hope that you continue to keep working on it to ensure our recommendation. For recommendation two, we recommend the district continue the commitment to trauma-informed practices consistently throughout our district. The goal of this is basically to decrease behavioral referrals and increase students' capacity to become efficacious learners. We further recommend that trauma-informed practices training be expanded to include general education and support staff.
Our third recommendation is a new one this year. We are recommending that the district expand the scope and sequence of the Common Sense Digital Citizenship Curriculum, or CSDCC, to begin at kindergarten and continue through grade 12. We further recommend that the age-appropriate lessons at each grade level throughout the school year. And additionally, for grade one, we recommend implementation of a cross-discipline summer writing team to review the CSDCC and develop the scope and sequence for each grade level. Currently, there are only four sections of the CSDCC being taught per grade unit, so five through eight, nine through 12, and K through four. Each are only getting four out of the nine possible units, and they're all getting the same thing in those bands. So we would like to see that expanded to help their digital citizenship.
My name is Karen Keizer, and I have served as a parent on the DPAC for the last 11 years, and I'm also an educator in the district. Tonight, I'm representing the Program Assessment and Review Committee. Our first recommendation is to devise a multifaceted approach to increase student achievement in elementary science, as measured by the fifth-grade MCA results at our highest need schools, to a level consistent with the district average. For me, this recommendation hits close to my heart. When my daughter moved from elementary school to the middle level, she really struggled in science. A normally conscientious, dedicated student, she said to me, "I'm so lost. I wish they would have taught us more science in elementary school." Our fifth-grade MCA test scores show a majority of our students in science at the elementary level do not meet state standards, with our Black and Hispanic students struggling the In a survey completed by 63 elementary science teachers in the district, representing all elementary sites, while a majority liked the hands-on approach of our science curriculum, a majority also felt there was a lack of time to teach it. Science can be a hook to reading and math, since it's everywhere in the world around us, thus being relevant to everyone, yet there's no mention of science in the school's improvement plans, and the students only receive three science kits per year. We believe that deeply analyzing the current science program and exploring different teaching strategies for science will improve student engagement and learning in our highest need Our second recommendation is to ensure a comprehensive alignment of communication to families regarding key information related to each individual high school year for all stakeholders within our program... Or within our system. Currently, each site does have a way to communicate valuable information to parents, whether it's through their website, mailed handbook, or trimester newsletters. However, there lacks continuity of the delivery of key information. Like when our students are expected to take college entrance exams, they aren't just in the spring of junior year. Or what are the implications of not taking a foreign language, the first grade at which it's offered? A sophomore might uncomfortably discover he's the only freshman in his first-year Spanish class. The CRC newsletter has wonderful information, but in order to see it in a timely manner, one has to send an email to be asked to put on the email list. Who else is missing this if they don't know what to look for? Placing all common... Placing all common information needed for every site in one place, allowing space for individual sites to personalize their information, and then delivering that information in a way that reaches all parents would alleviate questions, help during transition years, and make parents and students more comfortable with the systems of a high school and the high school's experience as a whole. Our third recommendation is to establish consistent programming experiences in advisory for students across all middle school and high school sites. Advisory was established for each site to have the opportunity for staff to build relationships with students, promote belonging, build lifetime learning, and discuss student-relevant topics such as current grades, career and college readiness, and digital citizenship. Conversations from a select few students from different sites came up with mixed results. For some, advisory has been successful. Students are engaged in activities that build the individuals, as well as team spirit within the building. For others, it's not much more than an extra study hall, a relearning of concepts taught in previous grades, or 25 minutes of card playing unless there's a test to prepare for later that day. Continuing to monitor and modify advisory would allow more students to feel advisory is valuable and help them build necessary skills for adulthood. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Well, just let me, first, thank you all for all of your hard work in doing the work of D-PAC, coming with your recommendations, and taking time out of your schedule to come here this evening. And we have Director Burgett has a question.
As you know, a while back, I served with D-PAC, and I, I really want to thank you again for all of your dedication and hard work throughout the year. There's a lot of time and effort that goes into this report and analysis and looking at data, and I want to thank you for, thank you for that, and especially you, Gloria. Thank you. I did want to ask, I'm not familiar with the, the verbiage or the, Marty, could you or someone else explain what is trauma-informed practices?
So the trauma-informed practices are a way to structure our response to the different kinds of trauma that students may be bringing with them to school. So, things that we don't know about are happening to them in their lives, in their homes, whether they have socioeconomic pressures, or they're homeless, or they have one parent who has to work four jobs to support them, or things like that. And the trauma-informed practices help the, the staff in general, not just their teachers, but anybody who may come into contact with them, learn how to deal with the, the potential trauma that that student may be experiencing, as well as what triggers may be in the environment that may set that particular individual off, either into bad behavior, or closing in on themselves, or acting out, or what have you. So the trauma-informed practices are, it's a, it's a whole curriculum for teaching the, the staff how to deal with those things, as well as things like creating calming spaces within the buildings, effectively safe rooms where people can go if they're experiencing that extra stress, if they need some help dealing with something. So, for example, this was our recommendation last year as well, and we are encouraging you to continue it. This past year, 17 district calming rooms now exist. It's a calming space that's also serving students in other ways. There are four buildings that have no calming rooms, and eight buildings that have a designated calming room space, so a portion of an existing room. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Director Gerhart.
This is partly a comment, partly a question. First of all, it's been an absolute pleasure. This is the second year that I've been liaison to, to D-PAC, and this is a stellar group to be associated with. So the one question that I have for you is, do you need more people, and where can we use them from?
Funny you should ask that. We have a lot of representatives here of a lot of schools tonight, so how convenient that you should ask such a question. As I meant, I, I don't know if I should call out schools that don't have representation, but if you do look at the final report, you can see if your school or a friend of your school is not represented. We had eight representative, eight representatives in the element, eight elementary buildings represented. We don't require you to apply for D-PAC, we just ask you to join D-PAC. There's no criteria that says you have to be a special something to join us. We want all sorts of diverse opinions. We want parents that are out here in the community watching this tonight. We want staff members to reach out to their students' families. You know who the people are that have concerns. Invite them to join us. Did you want me to name schools?
I don't think we need to go that far. I think the, the moral of the story is that, you know, many, many hands make for light load.
It does. We, you know, we have great opportunities for everybody to speak. The more the merrier, the more opinions the better, the more diverse the community, and diversity can be measured in a lot of different ways, the more the merrier, the more the better. Thank you.
It sounds like a great opportunity to go people fishing, to find these new colleagues for D-PAC. Board members, other, other questions? Actually, Director Burgett asked my question, so I'm, I'm hearing none. Again, thank you, and we look forward to your continued work.
Thank you. And thank you to the students that were involved in our committee. I know they already have full days, to the teachers that have full days and also join our committee. A special, a special thanks to them as well.
Our next agenda item is the Consent Agenda. Board members, are there any item or items that you would like to remove for separate consideration? Hearing none, I would move to accept the Consent Agenda as printed. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gertz, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries to accept the Consent Agenda as printed. Our next agenda item is, we're into action items, so we have a recommendation for approval of the 2016-2017 Medical Insurance Plan Transition to Self-Inured and Rate Renewal. Judy McDonald.
Thank you, and good evening, Chair Henke, board members, and Superintendent McGuire. So on the agenda this evening for school board action is a recommendation for approval for our group medical insurance renewal rates and movement to a self-insured platform, beginning with the 2016-2017 fiscal year. School board members have had the opportunity to review the proposed changes to the medical insurance plan, ask questions, dialogue about the implications of movement to a self-insured plan, and to consider the financial implications. The final step now is for board members to give consideration for approval. Our insurance plan covers 428 benefits-eligible employees, including our management groups and support staff groups who are not enrolled in the public employer, employees insurance plan, also known as PEEP. The move to a self-insured plan will have no impact on our current Preferred One Insurance Plan design options. The recommended premium increases 9%, 7% to allow for increase in medical insurance utilization, and 2% to help build the reserves needed to build and sustain a self-insured health insurance plan. Benefits of moving to a self-insured medical plan include greater control over costs, more flexibility in plan design, greater district control over premiums, and improved access to critical medical care usage data that will enable us to incorporate cost-containment strategies while still providing our employees with a quality, affordable, and comprehensive medical insurance coverage. So it's the superintendent's recommendation that you approve the group insurance renewal rates and the transition to a self-insured plan effective July 1st, 2016.
Thank you, Judy. Board members, are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Director Burgett.
Just wanted to point out that this is a really good opportunity in the future for, as Jamie explained, to save money on our insurance while maintaining a high-quality level. Hopefully, in the future, other employee groups may choose to come back from PEEP, since we offer an attractive option, hopefully. So, thank you.
Thank you. Board members, other questions? Hearing none. So I would move the recommendation for the approval, 2016-2017 Medical Insurance Plan Transition to Self-Inurance and Rate Renewal. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gertz, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries on that agenda item. Our next agenda item is the Recommendation for Approval Agreement on the Terms and Conditions of Employment between the Independent School District 279 School Board and the Osseo Principals Association, July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2017. Judy.
Thank you, Chair Henke. So on the agenda this evening is the Recommendation for Approval for the Osseo Principals Association Contract. School board members have had the opportunity to review the proposed, proposed changes, and to ask questions, and talk about financial considerations. This employee group consists of 50 principals and assistant principals who provide leadership at our elementary, secondary, and alternative learning sites. Their strategic and operational leadership supports our system and movement toward our mission. This contract expired on June 30th, 2015, and the new contract will be in effect beginning July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2017. The agreement contains some language changes to reflect current district practices. In addition, changes have been made to the group health insurance, life insurance, salary, sick leave benefits, and professional conference funds section of the collective bargaining agreement. In the compensation section, the salary range and base compensation per employee will be enhanced by 1.75% effective July 1st, 2015, and 2% effective July 1st, 2016. In the sick leave section of the contract, the language has been changed to eradicate the district payment of supplemental salary in the circumstance where an employee is out due to a medical condition and has exhausted his or her sick leave. The salary investment outlined, outlined is consistent with the financial parameters established by the school board for the 1517 contract negotiations period. The two-year agreement results in a 7.09 total package increase, and the total financial investment is $674,547 over the term of the agreement. And it's the superintendent's recommendation that you approve the terms and conditions of employment for the Osseo Principals Association.
Thank you, Judy. Board members, are there any questions? Hearing none. So we have a recommendation for approval. I will move the Recommendation of Approval Agreement on the Terms and Conditions of Employment between Independent School District 279 School Board and the Osseo Principals Association, July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2017. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gertz, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries on that agenda item. Our next agenda item is the Second Reading of Revised Policy 510: School Activities. Tim Wilson. And I've asked him, he'll read through all, one, two, three, he'll read through all five of these, and then we will do any questions on the particular policy, and then we will work on them one at a time after we've gone through all of them, so. First one is 510.
Chairman of the School Board, Superintendent McGuire, five policies are listed as action items on this evening's agenda. Three policies have proposed amendments, two policies are recommend, recommended for repeal. First readings for the policies were at the March 15th, 2016 School Board Meeting. There have been no comments on the proposed amendments or repeals, and no changes have been made since first reading. At least four weeks have passed since first reading, and under the school board's bylaws, if approved this evening, the policies will be amended or repealed. The school board should vote on each policy separately. Policy 510: School Activities was amended to include Purpose and General Statement of Policy sections to conform to our current format for policies. In addition, the policy was amended to clarify the differences among the different types of student activities. In addition, the procedure's added definitions and a chart that provide additional information about the rights and responsibilities for students and activity sponsors for various types of student activities. Policy 545: Student Fees was amended to conform to the school district's format for policies. Policy 558: Enrollment Options Program was also amended to conform to the school district's format for policies. Additional information about a family's options for enrollment was also included in the policy. Policy 434: Job Sharing. This policy is recommended for repeal. The policy affects only one or two teacher positions in the school district. The Human Resources Department recommends that any requests for job sharing be evaluated on a case-by-case basis to allow for any unique needs of the position. And finally, Policy 449: Teacher Transfer Policy. This policy committee is, this policy committee is also recommended for repeal. Teacher transfers are addressed through collective bargaining and internal processes making the policy unnecessary.
Thank you, Tim. Board members, are there any questions on Revised Policy 510? Revised Policy 545? Revised Policy 558? And then these are recommended for appeal. So having no questions, so I will move the Second Reading of Revised Policy 510: School Activities. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Craig, sorry about that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries on the Second Reading of Revised Policy 510. I will move the Second Reading of Revised Policy 545: Student Fees. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Craig, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries on the Second Reading of Revised Policy 545. And I'll move the Second Reading of Revised Policy 558: Enrollment Options Program. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Craig, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries on the Second Reading of Revised Policy 558. I'll move the Second Reading, the recommended repeal of Policy 434: Job Sharing. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Craig, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries on the Second Reading and the repeal of Policy 434. And I'll move the Second Reading, the Recommendation for Repeal on Policy 449: Teacher Transfer Policy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Craig, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries on the Second Reading, the repeal of Policy 449. Our next agenda item is Gifts to the District. I'll move to graciously accept Gifts to the District totaling $23,894.41. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Gerhart, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries to accept Gifts to the District. And our next agenda item is announcements. Director Gerhart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A Negotiation Strategy Meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 19th, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. in Room N10 of the Educational Service Center. This meeting will be closed to the public. A Policy Committee Meeting will be held on Monday, May 2nd, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. in Room W42 at the ESC. This meeting will be open to the public. A School Board Work Session will be held on Tuesday, May 3rd, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. in the Forum Room at the ESC. Topics will be World's Best Workforce Update, Developing 2016-2017 Strategic Plan and Priority, and the Superintendent's Evaluation Process and Timeline. This meeting will be open to the public. A Regular School Board Meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 17th, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. in the Board Room at the ESC. This meeting will also be open to the public. And a Negotiation Strategy Meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 17th, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. in Room N10 at the ESC. This meeting will be closed to the public.
Thank you. And our last agenda item is adjournment. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Director Gertz, we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Craig, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. We are adjourned at 6:53 p.m. Thank you, everybody.